I'd like to call Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for February 4th, 2013 at 7:00 PM to order this time. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Stay as long as you like after the business has been conducted at UKMC. If you want to leave, you're welcome to do that. I want to thank the media for being here. They're very faithful to come and report our decisions. At this time, I will ask Vice Chairman Morton for the invocation.
My comments that I come from Second Chronicles in the Old Testament. At the time of King Solomon, at the time he dedicated the temple in Jerusalem. And he was given that honor by God to do that. And he himself prayed prayer of dedication in front of the entire assembly of people for the dedication. And the Bible states when he finished praying, that fire came down from heaven and consumed the burnt offerings and the sacrifices of the glory of the Lord filled the temple. Later at night, I wasn't going to say exactly when, the Lord appeared to Solomon. And he made this comment to King Solomon. That's one of the famous verses in the Bible that we study. It comes from chapter seven of Second Corinthians, verse 14. Says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land." That verse came to me today, and I think it's applicable to the times that we live in. And what I'm fixing to say has no accusation against any particular person or any particular leader. Because the times that we're living in are a result of decades of moving in this direction. But it's strange times, and the economy that we have is in a disorder at the present time. Taxes arising, and this nation is facing a colossal debt that will not be paid for a long time by this board or our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. So in this nation, it seems like, you know, we have reached a time where we need God's healing in our land. And chapter, verse seven and chapter 14 of Second Chronicles provides us with that answer. And that is from the federal government all the way down to where we are in the present time. Let's pray. Father, we just ask you to guide and direct us as we work to serve you. We just pray, Father, that you will be with and guide President Obama and Vice President of the nation, United States of America. That you'll be with the Congress, with the Senate and the Congress, the governors of this wonderful land in which you live, each state, and the legislative bodies, and all the county governments and the local municipalities, God in each and every one of us as we seek your guidance and the decisions that we make for the betterment of the citizens that we represent. All those things, Father, we just pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chairman. Are there any, there is one adjustment to the agenda that I know of. We're adding under the closed session, we will be adding discussion for employment agreement. So note that. Are there other adjustments, or do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ashutu, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. The first agenda item we have this evening is a proclamation declaring the week of February 11th through 15th, 2013 as National FBLA PBL Week. This is a pretty exciting time for these students and the faculty that represent them to come and do this presentation. And we're always glad to do this. I think the presenters for this will be Courtney Seiden Schmidt, if I said that correctly, and Brandon Harkey. They want to come forward, and whoever else needs to come with them. And if all of them want to come and stand around, that'll be great. And I will note that after you finish your presentation, we'll have one of the commissioners has agreed to read the proclamation that we will be signing.
Throughout the county, or the country, the week of February 11th, colleges and high schools are celebrating National Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week. I'm Courtney Seiden Schmidt, President of the Stanley Community College PBL Chapter. And we are excited to be promoting the advantages of PBL and FBLA membership on the campus of Stanley County High Schools and Colleges. It is also my pleasure to be serving as Secretary of this state organization. I would also like to introduce two other state officers, Brandon Harkey, also from Stanley Community College, serves as our state historian. And we are especially proud to have, I guess, a guest this evening, our state president, Neely Egert, as a student at Mitchell Community College. I would like to introduce other Stanley Community College members, and then I'll let the President of West Stanley High School Chapter introduce their representatives. From Stanley Community College, our Chapter Officers Maggie Mobley, Jesse Crump, and Retha Von Wilder are here. And we're also glad to have a former member who is now a member of the state PBL Professional Division, Clea Bang.
I'm Chuckie Van Hoos. I'm the Vice President of the West Stanley Chapter, and with me is our Treasurer, Secretary Reagan Johnson.
Phi Beta Lambda is a national organization for colleges, students, and business and business-related majors. All our groups are looking forward to our upcoming state leadership conferences and competitive events, as well as attending the national conference next June in Anaheim, California. The FBLA PBL theme this year is igniting innovation, and we've worked hard to do through the involvement in community business and civic activities. All our chapters are also raising funds for our national charity that we support, the March of Dimes. We thank the Stanley County Board of Commissioners for signing the official proclamation as we celebrate our great organization. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, Commissioner Donovan will read the proclamation.
National FBLA PBL Week, February 11th through the 15th, 2013. Whereas Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America develop competent, aggressive business leadership. Whereas PBL and FBLA strengthen the confidence of students in themselves and their work. Whereas PBL and FBLA encourage members in the development of individual projects which contribute to the improvement of home, business, and community. Whereas PBL and FBLA develop character, prepare students for useful citizenship, and foster patriotism. Whereas PBL and FBLA encourage efficient money management. Whereas PBL and FBLA encourage scholarship and promote school loyalty. Whereas PBL and FBLA assist students in the establishment of occupational goals. Whereas PBL and FBLA facilitate the transition from school to work. Be it resolved, Stanley County, North Carolina, participate in the national designation of Phi Beta Lambda Future Business Leaders of America Week. In doing so, the Commissioners applaud the aforementioned goals and recognize the continued contributions and successes of FBLA Chapters at West Stanley High School and the Phi Beta Lambda Chapters at Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University. The Commissioners particularly recognize the Stanley Community College Chapter as it celebrates its 2012 national awards in the annual business report, management decision-making, and parliamentary procedures competition. The Commissioners also wish all the Stanley County FBLA and PBL members success as they prepare for participation in their upcoming state leadership conferences and competitive events. These chapters have conducted programs and projects that have benefited Stanley County. They have produced state and national officers and have won state and national competitive events that have brought attention to Stanley County. Most importantly, they have provided the opportunity for leadership development that has resulted in outstanding citizens and business leaders. The Commissioners congratulate Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America and are pleased to salute them publicly during this week of national emphasis. It is undersigned by Jean McIntyre, Chairman, Josh Morton, Vice Chairman, Peter Ashutu, Tony Dennis, and Lindsey Donovan.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan. As they return to their seats, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Dan Hazler, who works with these youngsters and does a very good job. And historically, and I do have to plug, my wife actually was an advisor at one time, and I have been over to their conference and judged some of the contests. They work hard, they do a really good job in Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer both. And even West Stanley have put Stanley County on the map with some winners at state and also at national competition. So we're proud of you and look forward to you doing good things again. Congratulations. Our next agenda item is the presentation from our Tax Administrator, Miss Malia Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening, Malia.
I'm here tonight, according to General Statute 105369, to report to you the amount of uncollected taxes for the current fiscal year. Upon receipt of the report, I request that you issue an order to allow me to advertise the tax liens in the local newspaper. As of January 4th, 2013, the total amount of unpaid real property taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property amount to $2,361,731. The stated amount will be reduced as we continue to accept payments. And delinquent notices were mailed on February 1st in an effort to collect these taxes. Are there any questions?
Anyone have a question or comment from Malia? I know you're working very hard to try to collect these taxes, and we usually have a pretty good collection rate, so we want to keep that going. A pleasure of the board. Need a motion to, I have a motion because Commissioner Ashutu that for the Tax Office to advertise these tax liens during the month of April. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you, Malia.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a presentation by our County Manager for North Carolina. North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, 2013-14 adopted legislative goals and resolution of support. And I want to publicly right now thank Commissioner Donovan for sitting in on those activities for me the week of, was it 24th, 25th? Mistress, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you this evening is a resolution that is for your consideration in support of the goals that were adopted by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners at their legislative conference that Commissioner Donovan attended. And so with that, I'll answer any questions, and I'd also defer to Commissioner Donovan, given his attendance at that event.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. I can't get it out tonight. Commissioner Donovan?
I would like to say that there was a very spirited conversation about a lot of these things. Of course, we were up there even on Friday when the weather was turning bad and it's kind of snowy across our state. But still, we had 86 counties, I know, that were represented out of 100, so I think that was an excellent representation. And like I said, the conversation was spirited. One of the things I just think is important to share is that the staff of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners goes to Raleigh and speaks to legislators on our behalf. And they reiterated over and over again that it's important for us not to be shy about our feelings toward a lot of these things. And to make sure that we have that conversation there in front of them and with them so that whenever they are walking the halls up on Jones Street, that they can accurately describe and represent the county commissioners across the state. Obviously, we're a very diverse state. We have a lot of different interests, from the mountains to the sea, from the urban to rural, from a lot of other interests. But I felt like that this was a good exercise, and we came out with very good results. And Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make the motion to that we adopt this resolution in support of these goals.
I have a motion by Commissioner Donovan and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Is there any further discussion? I will note that they have five top goals and priorities for this year for legislators was oppose shift of state transportation responsibilities to counties, to reinstate the ADM and lottery funds for school construction, oppose unfunded mandates and shifts to state responsibility, shifting of state responsibilities to the counties, ensuring adequate mental health funding, and preserving the existing local revenue base. So it's all about counties, and that's what we go over there for and lobby for. So we're trying to look after the citizens of our counties. And you'd be surprised that all across the state, most commissioners feel the same way and usually come to agreement on these things. Again, I appreciate you. There's probably, what, 30 or 40 different goals here, but those were the top, five top priority goals. I have a motion second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. The next agenda item is a presentation by Mr. Andy Lucas, our County Manager, for appointments to the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There's three individuals who terms will expire February 28th, 2013 on your planning board. Each member has served one three-year term. Mr. Alan McGuire and Mr. William Lilly have declined to seek reappointment. Mr. Marvin Smith has requested reappointment and is willing to serve another three-year term. You also have some additional applications that we just were able to call from our file here at the office. And so, you know, given that this is the first time you've seen this, sometimes I know you all oftentimes will take reappointments. But then with respect to new appointments, you oftentimes want to have a little more time to make decisions. So these were just three we had on file. You all may want to take a little more time and allow them a little more time for folks to get the word out that we have appointments, and then you all can make a decision at an additional or a future meeting. Or if the pleasure of the board is to make those appointments tonight, we want to provide that information to you. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have about these appointments or any of the information that you have in your packet for this item.
Anybody have a question for our County Manager in comments? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but I do feel like that we get better participation whenever we do take a little bit of time to consider. So given that we do have one that's a reappointment, I would move that we reappoint Marvin Smith. And then I would ask the Commissioners if they would consider delaying the other two until at least the next meeting.
A motion by Commissioner Donovan, second by Commissioner Dennis. Is there any further discussion? I will say that we'd like to look at these boards and make sure that we are drawing from all the demographic areas of the county so that we don't have everybody from one particular area. So this is a way that we try to do that. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Fiscal Year 2013-14 Budget Calendar Presentation, but also by Mr. Andy Lucas, our County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, there's actually the Stanley County Community Advisory Committee, we'd actually had two items under that appointment. So I'm going to go ahead and hit that one first. Which was that there was a letter in your packet from the CAC, the Stanley County Community Advisory Committee, seeking a replacement be named for Mr. Royce Still. And there's one volunteer application for your consideration. And then this person will serve the unexpired term of Mr. Still through February of 2014. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I apologize for omitting that. What's the pleasure of the board?
To put her on for the unexpired term, so I propose that we accept Sarah Grant here as the new appointee to fill the unexpired term.
Motion by Commissioner Ashutu and a second by Commissioner Donovan to appoint Mr. Grant here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, and I apologize again for missing that. Our next agenda item then will be Mr. Lucas with the budget calendar for this coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This time of year, we always are beginning the process of putting together the fiscal year 13-14 budget. We always start in January and start looking at our expenses and revenues and looking at our position control and getting the system ready for building the budget that we'll recommend in May. As part of that, we always want to lay out a calendar and a process. The first major item on that, or major items have already started, and that's our pre-assessment. But the next major item will be your board retreat on February 22nd, where you all will set sort of the guidance and kind of develop your goals and your priorities that we'll use to help develop the recommended budget. And so before you this evening, I have a proposed calendar for your consideration that will help guide us. There's some dates on there that have some asterisks that you have, you will certainly have some flexibility. And I know that schedules change, especially as we get out four and five months on this calendar where it becomes more difficult to pinpoint specific dates with folks' vacations and other things as we move into June. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but this is basic, just general guidance, hitting the high points on several key events as we build the budget for fiscal year 13-14.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Anyone have a question or comment about the calendar or to address to Mr. Lucas? It's kind of like the one we had last year. I entertain a motion to accept, to approve the calendar. Have a motion by Commissioner Donovan and a second by Commissioner Dennis. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the third public hearing on the revised Stanley County Animal Control Ordinance. Our presenter will be Mr. Dennis Joyner, our Health Director. Mr. Joyner?
Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be back. I know we've gone through this a lot of times, but I appreciate your continuing to consider it. Excuse me. At our last public hearing several, a couple of months ago, there were several items that were raised that we did look at tweaking some and adjusting to some extent. So I wanted to basically point out those particular areas. And I also wanted to, had some communication from the Tax Assessor's Office, Ms. Malia Miller regarding the section under licensure of dogs, which is on page six, I believe. There was a few little minor changes to that that reflect more of the way they're doing it. Conceptually, there's not a change in what's going on, but there is a little bit of an edited wording there that you should have a copy of that, I think, in your packet for tonight. One of the things that does not happen or would not be happening is they would not accept when they come in to get a tag for a dog, they would not accept money at that time. They would issue the tag, list the dog, and then the dog would show up on the tax listing at the next time. So what that really, what you have there is just a little, I guess, correction for how it was worded so that the wording adequately reflects the way they're wanting to do it. The other, one of the items that where there was concern related to the sanctions and penalties section under the cruelty, animal cruelty, Article III, I think there was some feeling that it's possible for us to, our animal control officers, to sort of go out and seize an animal fairly easily, or perhaps it was implied. That certainly is not the way that we want it to occur. Anytime we would handle any cruelty case, it would be pursuant to applicable laws. Obviously, we would have to get an appropriate, obtain a seizure warrant through the magistrate and follow that particular process. So we did have a little bit of wording change there in Section 5, under sanctions and penalties. But we couldn't just go out there and take an animal without following due process. So we tried to enhance or beef that up a little bit. We also added a section under clean shelter, which looked at, it actually adds an appeals option. This is to help address the issue of overcrowding issues, possible puppy mills, and those kinds of things where you've got a lot of shelter that's not of things, where you've got a lot of shelter that's not being maintained. Under that violation in particular, the, if the person wanted to appeal a decision for seizure of animals, they could appeal that, and the process there is lit, is written out as well. Going further down, subsection D was added, which basically just gives a, a possible violation for animals as prizes and public exhibit of animals, which are areas listed there in the cruelty section. Those are the main areas under the cruelty section that were, that were changed from the previous version that you have. One of the other cons, areas of concern was that of keeping stray animals. And we made a change in that, that you have there under Section Two, that's Article Seven, before it essentially was worded to require the animal to be surrendered. And that's not the case now. Just it asked that the person let Animal Control know that they have the animal. The reason for that really is twofold. One, to try to maintain the relationship between the owner and, and the animal. Also, to hopefully keep the animal in a secure area, cer, secure location. And if someone wants to house the animal, or keep the animal, and provide for the animal, certainly that is a benefit to the county, and it's better for the, the animal to be in an environment that's conducive to that, as opposed to being in the shelter. So, we do recognize that, and so we've tried to make that provision there. But we do ask that the person at least notify Animal Control, so that if someone is looking for their animal, we might be able to help assist in that regard. And those, that concludes the main areas where we made changes at, from the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Anyone have questions or comments for Mr. Dennis before we have the public hearing? Hearing none, at this time, I will declare the public hearing open. We have five folks who have signed up, and we will go on this sheet from top to bottom. And at the end, if there is anyone who came in late and wishes to speak, we'll give you that opportunity also. Ask that you limit your comments to at least three minutes, and I think the county manager has his time clock over there, and he'll hold up some advisors as you go through the three-minute period, and ask you to state your name and, you know, your, where you live. And so, at this time, Mr. Larry Faulkner is the first, first person on the list. Mr. Faulkner.
Before I introduce myself, I'd like to commend Commissioner Morton on his invocation. Me and a lot of our county citizens would appreciate that very much. My name is Larry Faulkner. I'm the chairman of the Stanley County Health Board. I've been there for, well, I've served on the board for nine years previous, stayed off for three years, and I've been back now for three or four years. Just seems like a, someplace I need to be. This ordinance that we're trying to get passed is to help our animal control people, when they go out on a call, and they have to an, ask, answer questions, well, who said this? Or who said that? Well, it's in black and white right here, folks. So, it gives them a little bit of teeth when they go out to answer a call. The ideal ordinance would be very simple. Responsible pet owners, be responsible for your pets. And that's all they really got to do. But we don't have, we have problems with people looking after their pets, just like they do, we do with anything else. They, they think the law is for somebody else, and they don't have to mind them. But I would, we've had some people that really works hard, that has worked hard on this ordinance, and I would recommend highly that y'all go ahead and approve this thing. And far be it that it's perfect. It is not perfect, but it's pretty darn good. And I think we can live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner.
Next is Mr. David Garden, Gardine.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, Commissioners. I'd ask y'all, I know they've worked hard on this thing, but there's still a lot of language in this, this new article, or new, new law, or whatever they, statute they're wanting passed, that it's going to be hard for a lot of people to live with. One of them, you know, a lot of hunters use plastic barrels, and I've asked a lot of veterinarians about plastic barrels for a dog. I put rubber mats in mine in the wintertime, and you put bedding in them, and they're as good as anything. The most sanitary doghouse you can probably get can, just Walmart sells a plastic condo for a dog, and that's one of the things, can be classified as cruelty, to keep a dog in a barrel. That's not true. You know, we could drill drain holes in them, build racks and different things for them. Another thing, you're given the authority of an animal control officer that doesn't have the training of a veterinarian to tell you whether your dog's healthy, or, or being taken care of, or whatever. I mean, if they've been reported, they're now saying they can patrol the county and look for those dogs. You know, I know of people, and I'm like, Mr., I, I agree, you should take responsibility for what's yours, and, and I think all the hunters do that. And I mean, I represent the hunters more than the pet owners, probably. But I think you still gave these people way too much authority, and I ask you people to still, to put a Citizens Action Committee together of hunters, dog owners, and different people, to study, to come up with something all of us can live with. I don't think we can still live with this. It's giving them way too much authority yet, and I do appreciate y'all giving me your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gardens.
Next is Mr. Tom Hyde.
Welcome, Tom.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. I'm here to speak against the portion of the proposed ordinance dealing with stray cats. My wife and I have, over the years, helped about thirty different stray cats, that is actually bringing them into our house, and, and having them as, becoming family members, permanent family members, not allowed to go outside anymore. If ever a stray comes, we try to work with it and, and entice it to come into the house. So, what I object to is, in this legislation, is our various sections which, which criminalize humanitarian activities, such as trying to care for stray cats, or feeding stray cats. I think it's unduly harsh and draconian. Stray cats are treated as nuisances. They are God's creatures, and I don't know if anyone's ever thought of this, but to the extent to which the stray cat population is reduced, will have a increase in rodent population, which I don't think people have thought that one through. In any case, my, my concerns would be addressed, could be addressed by a proposed amendment. I don't know that that's in order. But what I would suggest would be something as follows. That, that is that individuals who are engaged in the humanitarian care and feeding, and/or feeding of stray cats, shall be exempt from any and all civil and criminal procedures, prosecutions, sanctions, penalties, fines, remedies, civil actions, and uses of collection agencies as contained in this proposed animal control ordinance. And if you think that's a long list of sanctions and penalties, it is. And that's drawn directly from the ordinance. It's extremely heavy-handed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Next is Mr. Henry McLeese. Sorry, Miss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I remember now.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Henry McLeese, which is, thank you. I am the lobbyist, or one of them, for the North Carolina Sporting Dog Association. And I was asked to come here tonight to express some of the deep concerns that our, that our hunters, for example, the Rocky River Beagle Club here, the Coon Hunters, we have read this carefully, we're really concerned about this. When I came in September, or maybe it was October, I spoke about some specific sections in here that I was deeply concerned about, that are still in here. They're still here. But I don't want to spend time giving you the number and the page number so much as stepping back and letting you know from a state standpoint, you are facing what is being presented to a lot of counties very quietly, and with all good intentions, of a remedy to animal control problems. But I, I envision this somewhat like a worm on a hook. If you swallow this thing, it, it doesn't kill the worm, it, this thing is going to latch on to you and suck you dry. It is very expensive. The demands of this will grow, they will not diminish. The animal control people, if this were to pass, would have actually enormous power within their jurisdiction. I do not believe that's what you really want. I know that you don't want rabies in Stanley County. I know you don't want feral cats running around, and stray dogs, and dangerous dogs. But there is a way to deal with the actual problems without adopting into your ordinance structure, thank you, a very oppressive and heavy-handed ordinance, which will only get bigger, because they're, animal control will come back and say, you know, I just don't have enough officers for this, I need more money. Please do not pass this. Please reject this. I like Mr. Gardens' suggestion of a committee that is very broad-based, with citizens from Stanley County, all kinds of citizens, to look at this and come up with something that everybody can live with. Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Ms. Deborah Sprayberry.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Sprayberry, and I'm a twenty-four-year resident of Stanley County, and a fifteen-year member of the Stanley County Animal Rescue League, where I serve as a foster home, as well as an adoption coordinator. Of particular concern and interest to me in regards to these ordinances is Article Seven, Section Two, the Keeping of Stray Animals. I've reviewed the proposal, and also the revised proposal of January 22nd. And in regards to Section Two, the Keeping of Stray Animals, I disagree with the terminology of making this an unlawful offense. Why can it not be suggested? And it sounded kind of like that was the way it was going to be, the way it was said, but maybe not the wording changed. We need to see the wording of this changed, where people are told to get in touch with Animal Control, to let them know that they have something in their possession in the event that an owner is looking for that dog. I think most people do that anyway, and when people call us on our voicemail, we always tell them, if they find an animal, contact Animal Control. We've been doing that for years. Let Animal Control know that, that you have this animal in case an owner is looking for it, because the sole purpose is reuniting these strays with their owner. But that being said, if the owner's intent to, when they do harbor, is to provide a safe place for this animal while they go through their diligent effort of looking for an owner, and that includes running an ad in the newspaper, putting up signs, letting vets' offices know, they go through a lot of things to try to find the owners of these dogs. And if that is their purpose, then I certainly don't think they should be treated like a criminal for doing it. I do think that that list of people who call in, as far as reporting that they have found an animal, I think there should be a list there at Animal Control, where they can refer back to it. I, I know from years of volunteering down there, answering the phones, there was no such list. If, I mean, I would answer the phone, and somebody could call, they've lost something, the next call that came in could be answered by someone else, that they found something. Well, if those two people weren't communicating, then it was lost in the shuffle. In regards to Section Three, under what circumstances would or could Animal Control demand, uh, demand surrender of a stray? I think this is too broad, and it needs clarification, if not totally stricken from the proposal. I feel like good people in our county are going to hesitate to comply with a voluntary or required notification to Animal Control if, if an officer is allowed to demand surrender based upon his discretion at that particular moment. And it's been my experience that, you know, at times in dealing with the, the officers, you can call down there and talk to three different people, and you get three different answers. And you can call them three different days, and three different days, you're going to get three different answers. So, I just urge you not to, not to vote in favor of this, as it stands, as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sprayberry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who didn't get their name on the list? Please come forward, state your name, where you're from, please, and whether you're for or against this.
My name's Ned Russell, with the Rocky River Beagle Club. Couple of things that we have an issue with, David's already mentioned the, the plastic barrels and stuff. Really don't see a problem with the plastic barrels, if you provided you have the proper bedding in the barrel. You know, if, if the concern is that they're hot, or whatever, a dog's pretty smart, if it's hot, he's not going to get in it. The other problem that we have is the size of the kennel, the ten-by-ten. If a ten-by-ten kennel is what you require for an eighteen-pound beagle, then how is that big enough for a two-hundred-pound Great Dane, or St. Bernard? So, we would like to see, like has been mentioned, a committee to put, put together with some hunters on it, to, you know, kind of help come up with something that's a little more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Yes, come forward, please. Once again, just please state your name and where you're from. Thank you. I know you.
My name is Hannah Hearn. I've been a resident of Stanley County for about seventeen years. I have been active with the Stanley County Animal Rescue League. Somehow stray dogs seem to find our house very readily, and so I have adopted a couple stray dogs and found homes for others. I do think that Section Seven about stray animals should either be modified or denied, as it is presently written. According to the Health Department, the primary reason for this new ordinance is to help dog owners to find their animal that has strayed, and to reunite them. And I think that's a very good thing, and I support that very wholeheartedly. But the problem is, with the wording in the new ordinance, it's very clear regarding the status of the person who finds the animal, and cares for the animal, makes an effort to find it at home. It's very clear about that person's status, but it gives you no information about how, how Animal Control will use the information when a person calls in to report having a stray. I do feel like Animal Control has given way too much power without appropriate responsibility here. If, if they have the authority, they also need to have the responsibility to make a list of callers who say, I have a stray animal. They need to keep a list of callers who say, my animal is missing. They need to compare these lists, they need to compile these lists, put them on the county website, they need to put them in the SNAP. List of found animals used to be in the SNAP, and for some reason, which I am not aware of, but that was totally stopped. Thank you. Thank you. It needs to be publicized. Animal control needs to have responsibility along with this power to help bring owner, owners and animals together. Cause what we're after here is the welfare of the dogs, the good welfare of them. And I feel like the way this thing is written, it makes people who take in strays feel like they're criminals, and it gives animal control so much authority. But it really demands nothing new of them. And I think their responsibilities need to be written in the ordinance. So it's not just understood, it's written down. I would be glad to serve on any committee with any other citizens to help revise this, if that would be what y'all would desire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn. Is there anyone else that just came in that might want to speak? Had a hand up over here first and then back over here. Please state your name and, and where you're from, please.
My name is Sharon Gad, and I'm with the Stanley County Humane Society. I'm the president. And I, I myself feel like the officers do need that control because I get phone calls, probably five a day at least about animal cruelty, and they've turned it in. And I'm like, well, you need to call animal control. Well, we've already called them, but they can't do anything. Well, because they have no authority to do that. So my first comment to them is go higher up. That means you're going to have to get changes in the, the laws, go to the state, all that kind of stuff. But I'm getting this on a daily basis. Also, I'm personally one that had a dog got lost. You know, I'm walking it out on a leash, one of my fosters, it was seizures and everything, got off of the collar, it took off. I ran in, got my keys, I'm driving all over the place. Five days later, I mean, of course, I'm putting flyers everywhere, was in there every day to check on him. Five days later, they, somebody called and they found the dog and took it clear over to Oakboro. I live in Millingport. I'm not going to live in Oakboro, but if they'd have turned it into animal control, I was there every day. You know, and I'm not saying that's exactly what you have to do, but that dog went five days without medicine because somebody picked up a stray dog and took it somewhere. And it would have probably found its way home or all the roads I was going up and down and up and down, I would have found it. So that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I'm Sandy Stoker, I live in Baden. I would like to see the policy on tethering be readdressed and not stricken from the ordinance. Studies indicate that this form of confinement is seriously detrimental to an animal's physical and psychological well being. And a study by the CDC concluded that the dogs most likely to attack people are unneutered male dogs that are chained. So it is also an issue of public safety. This is an extremely cruel and extremely cruel practice that in my opinion should be prohibited. I do have with me copies of some information for anyone interested related to this topic. And this is also information I would be glad to provide to animal control, for the officers to provide to owners. I think oftentimes owners continue this barbaric practice because they believe it to be acceptable, and hopefully they could benefit from literature that would educate them otherwise. They may not help every animal as often the worst cruelty neglect offenders or owners without a conscience. And perhaps I'm naive to think that it could be useful. But if it has made a difference in the life of just a few of these, at least it can move us in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoker. Anyone else who didn't get their name on the list? Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. And I will ask what's the pleasure of the board?
Can I ask, um, Mr. Joyner a question?
Yes, you may.
How about, um, Dennis, if you could maybe address some of the concerns that people might have had here, whether it's how it applies to the ordinance for the people who just spoke? Like I think the strays, I think there's a misunderstanding on the strays because I don't understand the, the complaint about the strays, the strays. I don't understand why it's hard to call animal control within 72 hours of the stray. And then I think there, and then is maybe is your concern because you're going to ask for the animal and not turning over the animal? And I don't think that's, that's unreasonable to, to put in there to have, have people who find a stray call animal control within 72 hours. And then if animal control, for whatever reason, deems that that animal needs to be checked out or looked at, to turn it over to animal control, I, I don't see what the problem would be with that.
I'll take a, I'll take a shot. I think, I think the wording of the, of that particular section is probably where most people are getting, uh, the concern. Because it is, um, I mean, to, to say it shall be unlawful for any person to refuse, it starts out sort of in a, the terminology, I think, is, uh, is, is probably what may be offensive to, to a lot of folks. This section actually got started, we looked at several different counties that had similar sections in their ordinances. And I think, again, this goes to trying to protect the, the owner slash da, uh, animal relationship and to address situations where, you know, uh, an animal may, uh, a nice animal may come on the property and, uh, someone conveniently wants to keep that animal. And I think that's probably where the biggest issue is with the wording of it. I don't think, I mean, from what I'm hearing, it's, it's, it's giving too much power to us. And I'm wondering if some of that is in, in, in the wording. And I may not be answering your, your question very well for that, but I, um, I think what I, what I hear is that we're kind of, sort of wanting the same thing, it sounds like. I mean, and I do recognize if you've got a caretaker who has an animal, that's like I said earlier, I think it, uh, if they want to keep the animal, just let us know. And if they're going to take care of it, and that's one less animal we're going to have to feed, one less animal we're going to have to house. But they also need to abide by the conditions of the ordinance so that the animals cared for, or else they foster it and, uh, find a, an owner for it or what have you. I don't know that I'm covered your questions very well.
Anyone else?
Dennis, before you sit down, I, I've got a question for you. And I agree with a lot of people here tonight, this thing's pretty broad, gives a lot of power to officers. Where, do we have officers trained now that can enforce this and, and know how to do it? Are we training them on a daily basis? You, you can make this man be like a deputy. They need training every so often, real regular on it. It's, uh, gives a lot of power to, to a dog warden. Which do need training in people skills.
I, I understand the importance of training and yes, with, with this, there would have to be, obviously some, you know, additional training and support for what, uh, the ordinance actually entails. I think part of the issue is, uh, as was mentioned earlier, sometimes the frustration is that we get complaints from folks who say we're not doing enough or we're not able to act. And so we're sometimes caught in the middle between, um, what our current ordinance allows or, or does not allow. And, and so yes, in terms of some, um, you know, clarifying of how this would need to be, you know, enforced, certainly we would do, you know, training and orientation for, you know, what would be expected. I think it, uh, we're doing a lot of, I mean, we're working in this, a lot of these areas now anyway. This just gives us tools to, uh, to intervene that I think would, uh, help us in some areas that we don't have that, that option now. Civil penalties, for example, we don't have that option. Sometimes I'll have an officer hand them a notice of violation for the second or third time, and the person will look at you like, you know, how much is this going to cost me? Well, just don't do it again. So, uh, we, we need to, we need to have some, um, some abilities to, uh, to intervene a little bit differently, I think, than we have currently. One of the questions that was raised earlier was about the 10 by 10. That is, that actually is in our current ordinance, is, uh, is our, is a, is a 10 by 10. And so we just didn't, didn't change that from what our current ordinance is.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I believe that the Board of Health has, has worked hard on this, and they've, they've, they've come up with, um, a good maybe foundation. But, um, I, I can't vote for what we currently have due to, uh, some languages and some, um, maybe some discrepancies or some things that are not consistent. There are a couple places in here where I think that the ordinance maybe does, um, go beyond a little bit far reaching than, than maybe what I personally would like to see. And I think that we would benefit from, um, better communication. I think a couple of meetings ago, it was brought up that we needed to look at this and, you know, give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. At that time, I felt like I didn't have enough information, and I still don't feel like I have enough information. I like the suggestion of, of looking into it a little bit further. And, um, what I, what I would, what I would propose, and, and I'll make a motion to this effect, is that the county commissioners, um, uh, appoint a subcommittee to go first to the Board of Health and, and have a little more conversation, or, or to a subcommittee of the Board of Health, and have a little more conversation about some of the details that we, we've heard about tonight. And also that gives us a better idea about where some of your motivations are, where you're getting some of your recommendations from, some of the things that, how you arrived at your, at your place. I want to support our animal control officers. I've had, um, a nephew of mine that was, uh, injured by a dog that was, I'm sure, not in keeping with, with what, uh, you know, these rules and regulations. I know that there's danger out there. I want to protect the citizens, I want to take care of pet owners. I'm actually going to become one at the end of the month, I understand. So I, I want to do what we can to move this thing along. And I would propose that we appoint a subcommittee of our group to meet with at least a subcommittee of their group. And then it may be that out of that will come the idea that we might want to form a committee. I do notice in this, in this, um, ordinance, it suggests an animal control committee. And I think, I, I disagree with the makeup of that committee. So this would at least give us the opportunity as commissioners to maybe weigh in a little bit differently on how that committee needs to be made up. But at any rate, um, I'm, I'm making this longer than I want it to be. I, I, I would make a motion that a subcommittee of commissioners meet with, uh, either the Board of Health or a subcommittee of the Board of Health to see if we can make clear and improve the ordinance before it comes back to the commissioners for their, their consideration.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dunavant. You heard the motion, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion?
Yes, um, just want to say is, you know, I told y'all, I, once a month ago, I work with various departments. And, um, last week I went and worked with animal control for a day. And, um, this is their slow time of the year, and they were busy as heck. I mean, I rode with three different officers and we were all over the county. We were in, um, I think every community except for Baden and Richfield. You're either setting traps or picking up dogs, checking out bite investigations. And those guys worked really hard back there. And, um, those of you who've spoken, I know y'all are animal lovers, and this ordinance is not out to, to bust animal lovers, is, you know, they, the, the animal control officers appreciate you guys and the good care you, you take care of your animals. You know, there's a, there's still that essence out there of what do you do when the dog runs into the road and car has to swerve or, you know, as a public, or someone's walking down the sidewalk and a dog runs out and attacks them, or, um, the cats, cats, to some people, they're nuisance. You go to some guy's house, he's just tired of cats climbing up and down his car, climbing up on his furniture he has on his porch and scratching it and tearing it up. So there, there is, there is a lot to this. And, um, I know they have, they have a, there's a part in here that, that, that gives people the, the right to, if they don't agree with the decision that the animal control officers make, they can, they can, um, go to the animal control committee. And that's part of the Health Department right now. And I think there could be, there's wording in there for another committee that, that, that they could form out of that, and perhaps that could be, you know, another citizens committee. Cause you know, the Health Department is a citizens committee. Right now it's got input. And my thing, I was like, I would like to pass this as it is and move forward with it. That's just my, my talk on it.
Anyone else? I will say that, uh, it took me a while, but I really went through this. And I had some questions and concerns, but I think everybody's talked about those. But, um, uh, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second, I'm sorry, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to table this and form the committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it, four to one. Our next agenda item.
Mr. Chair. I would, uh, I would volunteer. I would volunteer and would hope that Peter, Mr. Commissioner Shudo would also be the other member of that, of our committee.
Consent is on the board, okay, I'm sorry, I forgot that. Mr. Dunavant, Commissioner Dunavant, Commissioner Shudo will be the subcommittee. And I think that each of the commissioners need to, uh, give them a list of anything that they, uh, would like to see go into the ordinance or be taken out of the ordinance. So it'd be specific. And I'll let you all decide, uh, at the appropriate time that you want to set up a meeting with the Health Department at their discretion. Have another comment by Commissioner Dennis.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see, and I know that these two, you pointed these two commissioners to be on there, and that's great, I'm, I'm glad to do it. But we also need to have some input. We've heard it from Mr. Ned Russell back there. I knew his daddy all my life, and I knew Ned when he was a little bitty feller, so, uh, we need somebody from the hunting community or the club or something on there, uh, Humane Society, uh, some people that's just out here in the office. You heard, uh, I can't call her name now, Ms. Hearn come up here a while ago and said she'd be offered to serve. I mean, there's a lot of citizens who would be glad to serve on this thing and have some input into it. I think we, we, we forget what we're saying and, uh, and I know that a lot of people think it's exactly the best thing since sliced bread. But I, I worry about, uh, passing laws that we just burden people with. We've got enough of problems now, but we need to keep passing more and more and more. And, uh, uh, it looks to me like we could have an ordinance less than 36 pages anyway, so. We're just talking about dogs and cats and a few animals. I mean, we're not talking about people. I, I just, I, I just, I think we need to put some of these people on that, on that committee, and that's all I got to say.
Mr. Chair, I believe our proposal was that the, uh, our committee meet with the Board of Health. And it very well may be that after that meeting that we would, uh, have a, a larger committee. I, I certainly agree that we need to have input from, um, a lot of citizens. But, but I think the proposal allows for that, it just doesn't start with that.
I think that Commissioner Dennis is right, and I think you're also correct, that we do need some other input, but it may be best to start with the two of you and the Health Board, and then go on from there and maybe take in input from, uh, from other citizens. Are we done now? I'm sorry. Next, uh, agenda item is the consent agenda on this agenda tonight. We have minutes of our regular meeting, uh, from January 22nd, Senior Services Budget Amendment and the Health Department Budget Amendment. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to accept is presented by Commissioner Dennis, seconded by? Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. And we come to that portion of our meeting where we will take, uh, general comments from the public. If there's anyone here who has not had a chance to speak and didn't wish to speak at the, uh, public hearing, if you have something you'd like to comment on, well, we'll take that. And, um, we won't fuss at you, but we probably won't respond either. So, anyone here who wants to speak? Seeing none, uh, is there a commissioner who has something they'd like to share with the rest of us tonight?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. On my Stanley County relicensing meter, we're up to $5,063,648 we spent on the Alcoa issue. And moving on, um, I did work, I mentioned I worked at animal control last week, which was pretty interesting. Then also I went to the Government Ethics Seminar and the Essentials of Government Program in New Bern, and it was pretty, pretty interesting programs out there. And then also a real quick report on the Admiral Downtown Development. They're, they're doing pretty good down there. They're getting into their second busiest time of the year with the outdoor Bonanza coming up and the Wine Festival. And that's all for today.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone else?
The commissioners, several meetings ago, uh, were talking about, or had an issue brought to us about NCA DOT and the designation of Highway 2427. We had an RPO meeting.
an RPO meeting, and DOT is actually changing how they're looking at that. So I want to report back to you that that designation that we discussed earlier, you know, is not really on the table anymore. The Red Cross and Locust will be looking at that a little bit differently. Also, I guess I have a question of Commissioner Shuto. How many years are you talking about this money being spent?
That was since two thousand and six.
So that would be six and a half budget years, I believe that you're referring to. During those six and a half budget years, the county has spent three hundred and eighty-five million dollars. And actually, almost a million of the money that you are reporting is in answer to lawsuits that were filed against the county for public records. And I don't see how you could actually, those are direct expenses that we have had to incur because Alcoa has filed suit against the county. That particular dollar amount, to me, doesn't need to be reported every, every time we get together. Plus, if you look at the total amount that we spent on this issue compared to the total budgeted dollars during those years, it's about one percent. That's discretionary money I think that the county commissioners need to be looking at. This is the most critical economic development issue that has come before, I think, the county in my lifetime. And I don't understand why we have to continue to talk about a thousand dollars here or ten thousand dollars there, certainly one percent of our budget, when it is the most important thing that we've done. You have the authority and the opportunity to talk about it all you want. I just don't understand why the, why it's so critical that we go over it and go over it and go over it when it is so negligible to everything that we're doing. Each of us could pick up an item, economic development, or highways, or social services, or anything else. It's just a very small amount. And I just want to make sure that the people of the county knew that even the last hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the county commissioners had to commit to this expense was done so because the people from Alcoa continued to file suit against us, even though we had a termally ill lawyer and in conversations that they had somewhat assured us that they were going to wait as we so-called negotiate this thing out to see if we can do better. But we have spent one percent, approximately one percent of all revenue, of all expenses over six and a half years on the most important economic development issue that has come before our county in probably fifty years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Just a quick reply. It is five million sixty-three thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars. And once a month, I'm going to continue to, in my efforts to just keep Stanley County informed, how much we spent on this project.
Okay, anyone else? It is time, Chair will entertain a motion to go into a closed session, to recess this meeting, go into a closed session to consult with the county attorney in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, decimal eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three, to discuss four-one water quality permit intervention APGI's public records lawsuit, and also GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, decimal eleven, parentheses A five, to discuss employment agreement. Motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Donovan. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. We are recessed and in the closed session.